This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, folks. The time being 4:49. I'd like to call this meeting on February 20th, 2025 to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Selectman Jessman is stuck in traffic, so we're kind of delaying things so that he can be a part of it. And Selectman Dawson will not be attending the meeting tonight. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept some donations, one in memory of Judy Suzadella's for $100 from Kim and Cindy Double Day. Second, $25 cash gift, gift from the wedding of Mark and Trish Cadis. And three, $30 cash gift wedding of Jan, Luis, and Margine Terce- Terce-
Cero.
Terceiro Rodriguez.
Agromonte.
Agromonte. Now, just for the record, these are weddings that Kim performs instead of taking payment, they make a donation to the senior center. So do I hear a second?
Second, Scanlon.
I have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
That was nice.
Okay, so we have a few minutes, so let's do the minutes of 1:16.
Those, I think those were the ones that we reviewed, right, last time?
I think so.
Yeah. Are you sure that those are the ones that we reviewed last time?
We also have 1:30 here as well.
Yeah, it should be two of them, Madam Chair. 1:16, 20, it should say 25.
Okay, 1:16 and 1:30, okay.
And 1:30, yeah.
Okay. Have a few more to throw out tonight. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January 16th, 2025.
Second for discussion. These are ones that were corrected.
Yes.
Okay, you all set with that, John?
You're good.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, January 30th.
Get to review those.
I, I.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, January 30th.
Second, Scanlon.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of January 30th. Discussion?
I think if any of the other two members can always bring them back up for, yeah, that, you know, after they do it.
Absolutely.
It's always nice to have that. Yeah, it's always nice to have the extra set I have again.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. We have some been short and sweet. Quick. Oh, wait a minute, I hear footsteps.
Yeah, I was gonna say our, our planning board candidate isn't here. That would be quick, but.
Oh, he, yep, he fared through it.
There he is.
So we went all the way up to the minutes.
That's what I heard, yeah.
Happy birthday.
I don't think it's my birthday, is it? But thank you very much.
Okay, Joe, we went all the way up to the minute. So we're good to that. We're waiting for 5 o'clock to open up the public hearing, the bond article on Academy Street. So if someone has just five minutes worth of talk, I will open it.
Madam Chair, we do have a, a citizen here that is here specifically for Academy Street. And I should, I should say a citizen. I think he's known to all. Steve?
Well, we'll open, when we open the bond hearing, then he can speak, if he's here for Academy Street, correct?
Yep.
Yep, okay. All right. So I'm going to open it. We're gonna swear in an officer, and then we're gonna have a discussion on Academy Street, if that's okay, just so you know the plan. We're kind of really bogged for time on this.
Yeah.
We have an overzealous town administrator that.
I just try to get things done, Madam Chair.
That's good.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I might just take a second and take these last three or four minutes. I do have your to-be-signed folders for the board. There are a number of, in fact, there's 15 documents that need to be signed tonight. I did take off the resident abatements. What we were doing, we're, we're currently at 48, I believe, and so we were gonna do 10. We've planned for the board to review 10 abatements per meeting, because we got until July 1. So I figured 10 abatements per meeting would give you time for some discussion. But I did take them off tonight because we have a pretty long agenda with a number of issues. So you'll see them not March 6th, because that's gonna be a pretty busy meeting. But the meeting after that, we'll start reviewing those. But I do have in the to-be-signed file, after the planning board member is introduced and you folks talk to him, want to ask questions, I have supplemental tax documents, abatements, a land use change tax, veterans credits, approvals, and one denial, a blind credit, elderly credit, solo credit denial, and then a grant for the PD which requires multiple signatures. So I will, I will take some time when you tell me to make sure that I get those to you. And I'll try to do them systematically and explain each one so that we keep the process moving. So.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Joe, can you put, please pass the certificate back down, please? Nope, got it. Just got it. Kim, thanks. Hey.
Right. That's right. You didn't even pick a binder?
It's only gonna be a couple minutes and then wait, wait for Helen and come up with her. Okay, thanks. All right. Okay, you've got everything you need. I've got everything I need. Okay, we're gonna.
I'm.
So we, we are, we have the opportunity now in honor to swear in Detective Brian Murray as a detective. Is he here?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't really see him here.
Well, it's supposed to be 5:05.
Yeah, he's, he's still got five minutes, Madam Chair.
No, we don't have that.
We're out of length, son.
Okay. All right. So we're waiting for the swearing of the officer. Let's backtrack and see if we can pull in some comments on the article, bond article. And I'm sorry for the confusion, but we're gonna have to break and do, we'll take some article, comments, and then break for the swearing and, and then take more comments if you, if you can understand that, okay? I'm officially opening up the public hearing, hearing bond article on Academy Street. Is there any public that wishes to speak on Academy Street or the bond article itself? Steve, you need to speak into a mic.
My name is Stephen O'Leary. First of all, you have any hands out on the bond? I don't see anything here. He's talking about the engineering or anything? Or do you, are you gonna do a presentation?
Nope. No presentation.
So there's nothing that shows us what you're, what you're planning or doing? This, this shouldn't be a public hearing then, because you should have information for the public to have.
This is a public hearing on the bond issue.
I know.
Okay, so the finance director is going to tell you about the bond issue, Jim.
But I want, I mean, Steve. I want to know exactly what they're gonna plan on doing. Am I right? Is, tell me you're gonna discuss that.
This is not about the workings of Academy Street. This is not a public hearing on Academy Street. This is a public hearing on the bond issue. We have to, we have to have a public hearing on a bond going to town meeting.
I know that.
Okay, that's what this is, the bond.
But you should have some information so we could look at it, so we could ask questions, because I do have some questions about how much work you're gonna be actually doing and stuff like that.
Madam Chair, Steve, just so you're aware, we're just opening the meeting for the discussion of the, what we need to do. Tim can explain what the bond is. At town meeting, we will have a complete layout of the engineering and what, roughly what we've, we've got for a price on fixing the road, so, itself.
Because that doesn't give us any information right now, this evening, to justify the bond itself.
Right. In the warrant article, it asks for $430,000, right, Tim?
$450,000. So it's a 10-year note.
But does that, does that do the whole street or just the?
Just the damaged, just the damaged area, which is about.
130 feet.
130 feet. And it repairs the, it puts in a retaining wall in between the bond, if you would, of the water company, where it's eroded down into the water company.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the information I would, would wanted to see tonight. I thought that was a public hearing for.
I'm sorry, Jim, but I, I'm really sorry on that. I do. Tim, do you have any?
Well, yeah, so the, so the, the work, the $400,000 that it's estimated to cost, and we've, we've put into the bond $450,000, including some additional contingency, it's to repair 130 feet of the retaining wall, and they're using blocks, a block method of doing it. There is an engineering report that, that details how it's gonna be constructed, and there's gonna be a temporary water line in from the water district to handle things. But the, the road itself is gonna be excavated up right to the point of the water line essentially, and then, and then backfilled once this is all done, and the road will be resurfaced there. It will only be that portion of that, the road that is most severely damaged. There was some discussion beyond that with the water district of other things they were hoping to get done, and that would be up to them if they want to continue that on further down. But the bond itself is a 10-year note, is what we're anticipating. It would be $450,000 at a tax-exempt rate of not to exceed 5%. But interest rates are changing, and inflation has been a little more persistent than expected. There would be no bond payments within 2025, and there's nothing in the budget for it. The first payment would be in 2026 if this project were approved. So this is providing the Board of Selectmen with bonding authority to be able to proceed with that if town meeting says that they want to repair this, this road. Otherwise, the road would remain closed as it is with barriers up, preventing traffic from, you know, through traffic either direction.
Jim, you're absolutely right, and I apologize. We should have been a lot better prepared. I do have an engine, my copy of the engineering study report, which says a lot of this. You're welcome to take this home. It's public knowledge.
Thank you.
Drop it off when you're ready with it before town meeting, please. We will also try to put as much information as we can online, Tim and Scott, so that we can get it up there so that they can know what exactly our picture is that we're doing.
Right. And Madam Chair, just so the board knows, the holdup really is, we haven't got complete confirmation on the other end. So I think I speak for Tim and I when we, we say that.
Right. Well, what the holdup is, what they're saying is, we haven't gotten an agreement with the water company yet to do the work. So that's in, it's still in negotiations. And, and so to put it up and say, this is what we're doing, it, yes, this is what we would like to do, but we don't have a full agreement yet with the water company. So, okay, it's very close to negotiations. Okay. Yep, we did. We're gonna close off after, Jim, after, we're, they're ready to do the swearing in.
Go ahead and close it. I have more questions.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
And we have one person online with a raised hand.
Okay. The person that has a raised hand, we, we have, because of the traffic out, out there, the detective was detained. So we're gonna go ahead and swear in our new detective for the town of Tilton. So if you just hang in there, we'll, we'll come right back to the subject of Academy Street.
It looks like it's Nate Langjoni has his hand up, so we'll get back to him. That's what it is.
Nate, we'll get right back to you.
Hi. Yeah.
Where's the C A M D one?
One of my questions, really, what would be the cost?
Miss where you're going?
Okay.
And you're gonna be able to take this with you. Yeah, the only one that didn't sign up was Karen.
Thank you.
All right. We had a good crowd tonight, so I appreciate everybody coming out. And I've known Brian for a while, so I'm very excited to have him become a Tilton family member. All right, you ready? Okay, you don't have to raise your hand. All right. So to, to the inhabitants of the town of Tilton in the county of Belknap in the state of New Hampshire, whereas there is a vacancy in the position of detective in Tilton, in the town of Tilton, and whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence in your ability and integrity to perform the duties of said office, do hereby appoint you, Brian Murray Jr., to the position of detective for the town of Tilton, New Hampshire, which shall be effective February 7th, 2025. And whereas upon your taking of the oath of office and having this appointment and the certificate of said oath of office recorded by the town, Tilton Town Clerk, you shall have the powers, perform the duties, and be subject to the liability of such office until another person shall be chosen and qualified in your stead. All right. So given under oath, our friends, this 20th of February in the year of our Lord, 2025. All right, Brian, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Brian M. Murray Jr.
I, Brian M. Murray Jr.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all of the duties incumbent on me
perform all of the duties incumbent on me.
As a detective for the town of Tilton, New Hampshire
for the detective for the town of Tilton, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities
according to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the United States Constitution
agreeable to the rules and regulations of the United States Constitution.
And the, and the state of, and the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now's a fun start.
So you can hold this up if you want. We'll take it. That will probably win. You wanna go?
Do you need all of that?
Oh, yeah.
Jerry, how are you?
Good.
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm working.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Breakfast. You guys, over here.
Not in front of the water cooler?
Not in front of the water cooler.
I love it.
All right.
Stand back. Yeah, you know what, I'm gonna end it then. All right, congratulations.
Nailing or something?
Eat everybody.
I like that idea. Thanks.
Back to the act. Need the pro.
Starting up, yeah.
You were radically mad.
All right, good job.
Let's see, man. Let me see.
Bye, too.
Bye-bye. See you.
Done it together.
I don't know. I haven't. Yes, that's. All right, we'll see.
Congratulations, Brian.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
So my point is something's about it.
Yep.
I did.
They do different, they can do something different. What you're doing now is not working. Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sure some people.
All those.
Okay, congratulations to Detective Murray. Welcome to the family. We are ready to move on and continue with the public hearing on the bond. I know we have some hands and quite a few people online, but we want to continue with Steve. He had, didn't finish his questions.
Okay.
Okay.
May I ask any more questions?
Before you, okay, got it. So I thought maybe Tim could give his report, and then if maybe there might be questions answered with the people that have their hands raised, we could answer some of the questions on the bond.
Okay, so, so in any case, recapping the bond, so the, the bond is for $450,000. It is up to the board to negotiate the terms, but the terms that, that we've estimated have been based on a 10-year note at a tax-exempt rate not to exceed 5%. And that works out to be, the first payment would be in 2026, and it'd be about $50,000, which would be roughly 5 cents on the tax rate. So $100,000. So $100,000 property would be $5, $200,000 property, $10, $500,000 property, $25 in additional tax. And, and that would, that would cover the construction of that 130 feet of the retaining wall, resetting the guardrail. There's a number of things, and I'm gonna make sure that the engineering report is available on the website. And I think it is out there, but I'll double-check and, but if it isn't, it will be before the end of the meeting tonight. So that is the, that's the, the terms of the bond, but the board could decide, depending upon prevailing rates at the time that we have to secure it, they could select a different term or different method of going out and securing financing. So, so the authorization would be for the board to be able to borrow $450,000, and it would be active for five years from that point.
Okay, so we're gonna go online or, okay. Anybody online now that have a question after Tim has just given his presentation on the bond? Nate, you have your hand raised. I really can't see.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah. Hi, Nathan Langione, 8 Winter Street, Tilton. I am a member of the Tilton Sewer as well as the Tilton Northfield Water District for my water. And for transparency purposes, I am the current district clerk for the water district. I just wanted to say that I believe this will not get cheaper to fix in the future, and not addressing the issue could cost significantly more if there were to be a failure due to the fact that there are both water and sewer mains in that street. And I think, you know, less than $50 a year is not that much of a price to pay to, to get the problem resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Anyone else? Anyone else online? Hearing none. Here, Chuck, go ahead.
Yeah, is this mic on?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, approximately when would the project get underway? And approximately how long would it take? Any idea on that?
We were hoping to do it in '25. As Tim and I met with our engineer, it looks to be like it's something we can do in '25, but we're basing it on, we gotta go out to bid and, and that stuff for construction. So it would be pushing it, Chuck, but we hope to do it in '25.
Okay, the last comment was that I had checked with Tim, and I guess it would be 5 cents a thousand on the tax base. So someone with a home, say, for example, around $500,000 would be $25 a year. And I think that's important information for people to know so that they can support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyone else would like to speak on this? Okay. Hearing none. I am not gonna close the bond hearing yet, but I do have some other people that we need to hear, which is Helen Hanks and Kim Soles on the upcoming voting at, at town meeting. So Helen and Kim, why don't you come on up? I believe we put extra mics up there. Hi, Helen, how are you?
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Great. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Wonderful.
Glad to hear it. Well, I know you're excited. Another election. I mean, it just feels like we just had one, or three. So Kim and I are here, I'm here primarily just to, just talk through the inspectors of the election, also known as ballot clerks. Give you the names of those individuals, seek your support in having them be inspectors of the election for the statute. And so the individuals I have recruited are Ken Norton, William Trevor, Jackie Rushlow. We have a new ballot clerk to be trained, Sabrina McPhail. We'll likely use Chuck Mitchell and Kathy Mitchell. And that will be plenty, I think, for this election.
I'll make a motion that we accept the moderator's selection of the ballot clerks.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I saw that the warrant was signed on February 17th, and it indicated on the bottom that you gave a copy to the town clerk and that it is currently posted at the Wanswaum Regional High School. What's the second public location in which it's posted?
Out here in the kiosk.
The kiosk, so for the record, the second location, because it's not on the bottom of the warrant, is that it is publicly in the kiosk.
It should be, right?
Outside. It is on the bulletin board in the town hall for the public.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we did that. And then the other piece is obviously to post the timing in our normal and usual way so that residents of the town know what time and where they're going.
We're gonna have the signboard, right?
Well, it needs to be posted here at town hall, and then we have the signboard as well, the highway.
I just wanna make sure we get it out.
Yep.
Yeah, in a timely manner.
Right. We just want to remind people
Yep.
to come and use their.
Catherine's not here to say it.
Use their vote, thank you.
Somebody needed to say it.
Appreciate it, she would be coughing all the way through that. And beyond that, Mr. Hilliard's been resourceful as well as our finance and IT officer in making sure both the high school and the AV resources are prepared for Tuesday and Saturday. So I think, unless they tell me otherwise, we're squared away. All right. A usual footnote, you're to be there by statute. If you're not there, let me know who your designee is.
Gotcha.
You'll make wonderful greeters.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Kim, you have anything?
No, we're good.
That's great. And Kim will be counting the ballots we received.
Tomorrow morning at 9:30.
Everything all set with the handicap?
Oh, yes.
What, what's happening? Do we, we haven't heard, I don't think. Are we using the tent or are we just using the computer?
We'll use the tent and the computer. And I need to connect with Tim and get the computer all squared away. I have the computer, and I've got the directions, and now it's grabbing my favorite person, Tim, to help me do that.
Gotcha.
Okay.
All right. I think Tim's our favorite person tonight.
It's always my favorite person.
I hope they buy you lunch. Well, that might do us. That might do it, though.
$24.99, you're within the statute. Anything else?
Wait a minute, I did have a question.
Have my book.
Town meeting itself, we're all set on that. It's just the AV, the, the.
Audiovisual.
Audiovisual, the ballot clerks up at the top, and then us down here. We have a presentation.
Supervisors of the checklist at the top.
Supervisor, I'm sorry, supervisor checklist, tell you if we have a presentation, which we do.
Okay.
Thank you. And also.
I'll need to know if, as you typically do, who's going to speak to each article.
Yes, that was the other thing. Thank you. So we'll do that forthwith and get that to you.
Like a lot before March 11th would be great.
Correct.
So like tomorrow.
Yep. Maybe if we had a copy of the warrant, we could do it tonight, but, no, we can't, because Catherine's not here. I'd like her to be included in on it.
We can include her.
Yeah.
So she can take care of all.
Who would like to do this? I hear none. Catherine, okay, I get it.
Congratulations, Catherine.
Congratulations, you're it.
This video.
Oh, she's familiar with this game. She's very familiar with it. All right. Okay, we're all set on town meeting then. So we just need to let you know ahead of time.
Yes, please.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you and everyone who's helped. Great, thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, Helen.
You're welcome. Stay warm.
Yeah. Stay out of the traffic. I'd go back the, the, the back, back way, seriously. All right. We should jump into tax abatements if we could.
Madam, madam chair, this is where I, it's gonna take me probably a half an hour to get you guys to go through these, so it'll time out perfectly. I'm gonna give them to you one at a time, and if we'll, I'll explain to which it is. I'm gonna take this mic with me. And we also have, I read the list here earlier, there's 15 items. Many of these come from Lauren, and they're related to tax assessments, whether they're abatements or credits to the town. So we need to get them done in an Italianly fashion. We have two land use change taxes, and I'm gonna come up and join you, and I should have left the microphone there, and I'm gonna read them to you as we do them, okay?
There are two land use change taxes.
That's correct.
There's so much paperwork to them. You need a chair?
If I screw this up, Amy will have my head. So the payroll, you've already done, thank you. Again, I had told the board, Joe, you weren't here. Residential abatements are currently at about 44. I think we have three or four more coming in. So I discussed with the chair about how we should do this, because we're gonna be here for a long time if we try to do them all at once. So we have until July 1 to answer them. So what I would do after the sixth meeting, which is gonna be another very busy meeting with DOT and the board, after the sixth, we'll do 10 per meeting. So if we miss, you know, we'll have a couple of months to do it. But, but some of them, I believe, will generate some pretty serious discussion, so. So the first one that I'm giving you is Lockmere Meadows. And I will begin with you, madam chair.
Thank you.
They, excuse me, they are marked where to sign. Some of them need multiple, a couple of them need multiple signatures, but, and madam chair, just for the record, we only need a majority, which we have, because there are four members here, so.
Thank you.
To the audience, I'm sorry, this is gonna take a little time, so, but it's important. The second one is a supplemental tax for Lockmere Meadows. I'll begin with you, madam chair.
Yep.
And so the board understands there, Lauren has signed off on them, but they're pretty well clear as to what you're signing them for. And the two that you're signing are credits to the town, so that you're aware, those two. The third one I'll give to you, madam chair, is an abatement. It is the legacy sprint removal of the cell tower that is on the smokestack at Tilton School.
Tilton School, right.
First two were supplement.
Correct, yep. This one, the next two, madam chair, are land use change taxes, and I believe they only need your signature? Or do they need the signature of the entire board? I don't.
I think it's the board.
Corporate. Only three spots on here. Oh, here we go. Sorry. Yep, sorry.
Black ink, folks, I hope you have that.
Yeah, I think the statue now says blue is acceptable, but black is the preferred. That sound right, good?
I think so.
Perfect, thank you, Joe. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, some of them do have two. I think it's only the.
This one initially paid a land use change tax when, initially when they sold the property, divided the property. Big subdivision on Range Road.
The next one, madam chair, is a veteran's credit denial. I will not say the name, but it's denied based on the taxpayer that requested it is divorced from the veteran, and it does not apply. that requested it is divorced from the veteran and it does not apply. The next one, Madam Chair, is a veteran's credit and it is an approval. Uh, two sign. Just, yeah. Yellow is for, I think, an initial, Joe.
Okay.
Some of them are a little bit. Uh, again, another veteran's, uh, credit approval. Madam Chair?
Yep.
The next one, Madam Chair, is a blind credit and this is an approval.
Thank you, Joe.
Uh, this is a elderly credit exemption. Uh, it is a denial, uh, based on income. And even, I was told by Amy today, even if this individual, um, were, if we were, are successful at the 25 town meeting, uh, this person would still be, uh, unfortunately, uh, not eligible.
Let me have a go at it.
We do have workman's comp for writer's crap. And the last, uh, Madam Chair, the last application for exemption I have, uh, is a denial and it was a solar exemption, which we don't have a ordinance for that. I thought there was paperwork and police work, my God. And Madam Chair, the last, uh, item I have, and the chief was here.
He is.
He's still here, okay. Uh, is a, uh, office highway safety grant agreement. Um, I remember these when I made them out years ago. It does require, uh, multiple initials and signatures. Um, and the chief, if there's any questions, the chief can speak to, um, this. I'm sure the board's dealt with, uh, highway safety grants in the past. These are always very helpful, so. A fair share of them are initials, but there are some signatures. Uh, you, Madam Chair, are the authorized contract signatory on these, so.
The board needs to make a motion to, let me sign this document for the chief.
Bubbligate our authority.
For the grant.
For the grant, purposes of signing the grant.
The highway safety grant, yep.
And there will need to be, Madam Chair, a vote at the completion of signatures and initials to accept it. They will be looking for those minutes, so.
Why is there so many grantee initials?
That's the standard. I went through the whole thing, yes. The standard.
Make a motion to.
Agreement of the state.
Let the chair sign the highway safety grant.
Uh, I'll make a motion to allow the chair of the board to sign the highway grant.
Highway safety grant.
Highway safety grant.
Uh, just a minute, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Chief, did you need a second to explain? No? Okay.
Yeah, I did, yeah. It had already been discussed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a little bit behind the eight ball. Story of my life.
Oh, it's on both sides, my goodness.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, um...
State got you coming and going.
I think the money comes through the Federal Highway Safety Traffic Bureau or something, so it's...
Well, I've earned mine on this one.
Okay.
Okay, that's the... Good memory installer. Ever have to do that in school? I will not lie. I will not yell at the teacher. And you have to write that down a thousand times.
I did.
No, never did.
Yeah.
None of us ever did.
Yeah, sure. And mine were with nuns.
So were mine.
Oof. They loved me.
Saint Mary's School.
Yeah.
So, all right, Tim. I think so.
I think that's the most people I've seen online before.
Yeah.
Maybe they are on...
I mean, look over it.
Academy Street area? None of them spoke up, they're just neat.
Madam Chair, I do have, uh, your, uh, review file. If I could pass it along. There are several, uh, things in here. Most of them are, are just informational only. Um, obviously talking about the Franklin Animal Shelter is one of them that's closing. Currently, the Belknap County Commissioner's, uh, a report on the state of the 2024 financial condition. Uh, Xfinity, um, just basic note as to, um, uh, they no offer, no longer offered certain channels, which they want you to know about, I guess. Uh, Lockmere Village District, um, a temporary notice of, um, and I'm sure, uh, Selectman Jessman can tell us, uh, water service will be temporarily interrupted on February 24th and 9:00 a.m. to install a new, a meter and associated piping. Um, expected to take approximately two hours.
I'm gonna guess that they given notification ahead of time that they're gonna do it to all the users.
Oh, yeah, they've sent out.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a copy for you guys to know.
In the process of, uh, installing a whole new system at the pump house, um, because we had the PFOAs in the water and this new filtration system is part of that effort to make our water totally potable. Um, it's potable now, I mean, informed risk. We're in, we are better than the old standards, but they changed the standards and now we don't comply anymore. And we're gonna be in...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, $1.2 million.
He's got it.
Does that need the other board's initials too, Tim?
No.
Other board?
Because they made a motion to let the chair sign.
Subjugate it, right, okay.
Usually it's just the chair.
Okay, and this is the, uh, review file?
Um, there's still, there's still in the water. Gas station at the top. They still do regular testing on the ground, so they test water in my groundwater, which I don't use, totally off line. Yeah, there's still, and I'm down in the lowest corner, so.
It's a river too, because that's where it's gonna, want to migrate.
Yeah, um, yeah. Absolutely.
This should go upstairs to our office, we don't have this yet.
No, okay.
No.
Okay, we can leave it right out then.
Okay. Um, we need to, not tonight, but we need to talk about the agreement with, the agreement with the town of Tilton and the Franklin Animal Shelter and that's no longer gonna be, we need to figure out uh, who, what, where, why. It's gonna...
Any update?
Figure that out.
The chief may have an update on that.
Well, so, yeah, I won't get too far into it, but, yeah, we'll have to sit down. Now, I'll, I'll get with, uh, with Scott, Tim, and we'll, we'll figure out, um, an agreement with, with somebody else, if it's gonna be New Hampshire Main Society or, or Burchill Canal, one of the two, so. Or Moonlight, exactly, yep, so this...
It's a different name.
Yeah, it's on Autumn Drive, so we'll make contact. So I'll, I'll have more.
Yep.
I missed a part of that, why are we going to be with Franklin?
Franklin Animal Shelter is being, is shutting down. They're...
Yes, they were.
Uh, there, there are a lot, it was in the paper, from page of the paper, but, um, the board of directors came to a decision that they no longer can, 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 didn't, continue under the path that they were going in. And so they were shutting down. But we have an agreement with them and I'm, I'm extremely saddened by it because they are an extremely great organization, but I won't get into it, but this is, um, we have an agreement with them to shelter our animals.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, I know about that part of it, but I didn't know they were shutting down.
Yep.
That's too bad.
I think it was last week's, uh, newspaper. It was, it, you go online, it's right there, it's all about it.
I don't, I don't, I'm not up on the news.
It's a, it's, it's a decision by the board of directors.
Not a bad thing.
There's a lot of people not happy about it, trust me. Lot of people not happy, but that was in their decisions, so. 5:55. Do we have, uh, Robert?
I haven't seen him yet. I, I told him six, so.
Okay.
So, um...
And do you have any of your, uh, town administrative report you can do in five minutes?
Yep.
Any part of it?
I can. Did Steve, before we close the public hearing, Steve, did you have any other questions?
I do have a couple of questions. I'm looking at... I'm, I'm looking at the cost on a couple of things. And a couple of things jumped right out at me. A portable messaging sign. Are we buying a sign to put on that street?
No. It said, uh, no, we're gonna be using our portable messaging. Some of those, that was, uh, an estimate, as if a town didn't have that. And then we went over with McFaulen as to what we could contribute to that. So that's why I was reluctant to give it to you like that on the cost. So messaging board, um, a couple of other things that we could, notices, uh, things like that, we could, the town could contribute, which would take off the, the total price.
It'll, it'll knock off the 430 price, because this is tied in with the 430 price.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I'm just...
Right.
And thank you for letting me borrow this, I'll bring it back to you next week.
No problem, drop it down at Town Hall, they'll all know.
And we will have it online.
It's already online, yep. Yep, it's already online.
But there's a lot of people don't, you know, especially if you have to print it out.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
But thank you, and I apologize for not having the information here tonight. We, we should've thought ahead, uh, with the bond and not having the bond information tied to the work itself. What's in, what's really tied to the work and how much work is, uh, the cost of the work? the cost of the work tied to the bond, so.
Okay.
We should have had that information for you, Steve, and I apologize.
I appreciate it, and are they gonna do, do the whole presentation at the town meeting on this?
I believe we are.
So I spoke to the moderator briefly as she was leaving, and she would allow a short presentation, so.
Is McFaulen Johnson doing it, or are we, the town?
I think Scott and I would need to.
Okay, so it will be, it will be us that will do the presentation.
But it would be, it would be limited.
Very limited.
A limited.
Do you have any idea if they denied this, what are you gonna do, complete? Have the road completely shut down again for another year, or?
It gets shut down, but, you know, personally, I hope they don't deny it because it's a safety issue. It's just one big giant hole in there. And it washes out from the bottom, and it and it creates not only a safety issue to our abutis, but it also creates a safety issue to the road itself.
My biggest issue is people coming down Prospect Street now, because of the change. I know I mentioned it to Joe back in September at the election about parking in the winter time. I did see a no parking sign go up once, and it disappeared. And they're still parking on Prospect Street and on the park, on the sidewalk also, which is noted as a public sidewalk, it's painted on the sidewalk, because I guess there was the issue years ago that someone.
Right.
Says it's not a, so they made an issue of it.
That's correct, they did, so there's no parking on the sidewalk.
Yeah, but there's still parking there, that's.
All right, well, go ahead. All right, 6 o'clock, Nate, is it really, really quick, because we're gonna close the public hearing on the bond?
Yes. Could we just have some printed material at Town Hall at the front desk, just available to the public on the the Bond and the Academy Street issue?
Absolutely, we could do that, yep, we should do that. All right, Greg, go ahead.
Whoops, sorry. Greg the older, 161 School Street, does the town face any liability with this? If that lets loose and takes that, that little barn or garage out down below it?
We absolutely do.
So that's another reason.
Absolutely, yep.
Bad and gravity always wins, that thing's moving downhill. Doing nothing is not an option.
Okay, thank you all for, we didn't expect the, the the crowd that we had for the public hearing on the bond issue. I really liked the questions, thank you. We will be more prepared at town meeting. So with that, I officially close public hearing on the bond at 6:02. Thank you, Steve, I appreciate it, we'll see you soon. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I promise that I will be brief, I know Tim has some things he'd like to discuss. Everybody knows that Mabel is down in the entrance, and the board had agreed before my arrival to put that statue on loan with the Historical Society, and it was going to be stored at the, I believe at the Tilton School, either the mansion or where they the Historical Society uses that as a sidebar. Today, the school came down with some students to just look around town, check out some of the statues downtown. They checked out Mabel, then they went down to check out the jail cells downstairs. They thought that was quite interesting in the dungeon, so. It is scary down there. So anyway, it was John Sorrello, our Chair of the Historical Society, who does a fantastic job, took the time. But he and I had a discussion about two specific things, and I apologize, Madam Chair, I was gonna talk to you directly before I asked the board on this second one. But the first one is, they would like to take Mabel up to the Historical Society. We really could use the space downstairs, it's not that we don't like her, but we do need the space, it was kind of cramped. The understanding would be, and we don't have a document together, but that the town would be donating Mabel to the Historical Society with the understanding that if they ever dissolve, Mabel would come back to us. It would not, you know, just be given away, I guess that's their procedural.
My understanding was gonna be on loan to the Historical Society, is that correct? That's a little bit different way that you just explained it.
No, we need to give Mabel away, the title to Mabel.
Right.
Even if we allow them to display Mabel and use it as their facility.
It's on loan forever, and if they dissolve, it comes back to us.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that was the agreement that.
So we don't give them, give her away, we loan.
Her, permanently, basically.
Correct.
Right, okay, just so that we couldn't say, you know, a future board couldn't say, well, we don't like Mabel up there, we want Mabel down here.
No.
So. It's, it's a, yeah, okay, as long as that's, as long as it's clear, John wanted to make it clear, and I think it's insurance purposes, if you want, my thought, he didn't say that. The second thing was, and I don't know if you've seen them, I know you have, Madam Chair, we have the 150-year-old Tilton anniversary bags. We had a multitude of them downstairs that were basically put in storage and just left there. I think it was Sue, when she was cleaning, that found them. The Historical Society has asked if they might be able to keep several of them for historical purposes, but also hold a fundraiser and sell off the remaining, maybe keep 10 and sell off the remaining. I think there's 110 or so, is that right, Tim? There was over 100?
Yeah, there's a number of them, several boxes.
Yeah, yeah, so, and they could use the money as a fundraiser. And I told them that I would ask the board and get permission before we do that. And they are planning on doing another fall historical event, and they've asked me to participate. I thought it was a great thing in the fall, so.
Oh, I already told you.
Hi, we do that as a motion?
I think that you could do it as a motion, but I'd really like to wait until Catherine got, is here.
Okay.
To weigh in.
Actually, I'm.
In favor?
But we'll wait till.
Okay.
I mean, I don't care, does, I'm asking.
I can ask.
Does the board want to wait for Catherine? Up to you.
Are they in a big rush, they can wait?
No, no, they could wait, yeah, 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 or I could call Catherine if the board would like.
Let's give it, let's give it a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Catherine will be back and.
Okay. Very good.
Is that okay?
Yep, that's fine, I'll, I'll explain that to John.
Yeah, just one thing, that when they go to move it, I did all the reconstruction so that it would stand up on its own. It was all broken apart, and I'd like to be a part of the moving so they know how to properly do it.
Perfect, that'd be good, okay, well, that'd be perfect. That way they could know exactly how to do it and make sure that it reappears up there in the same fashion that it is here, so. I had briefly sent out a notice to the board about, and we really kind of dropped the ball on this, the, the annual household hazardous waste program. The town of Tilton's been involved in it, it's put on by Lakes Ridge and Planning Commission. They kind of coordinate all of the towns, and it's, it's like an amnesty day for paint and all of that stuff that you, you want to get rid of, but you can't get rid of. And right now, I have a copy for each of you of all the 25 participating communities. They actually have to have a vote to be able to do it. Annually, we, our costs have been in the range of 3,000, 3,500. This year, our cost would be 40, and it's based on the usage in, in this entire program with all of these towns. So, for instance, in 2024, we, the town of Tilton made up 3.11% of the entire hazardous waste that was dropped off at any one of these locations. So they do give us a brochure that says when these dates are and that our citizens, if they can't make it to Tilton on our specific date, they can bring them to Sanburden, Northfield, New Hampton. So I do have a copy of the proposed communities that are participating. Tilton is on there, but I asked them to wait until the board voted on it. It is money, a money object in the amount of 4,485 for 25, 2,025.
Make a motion we participate?
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent, thank you. I'm gonna reverse my order here. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, Tim and I have met with the Island Bridge folks. We have a contract that we're looking over. Tim actually found a couple of, or an area that we want to get some clarity on. The chief and lieutenant from the PD met with us to meet with the bridge folks to discuss how we're gonna do this. It's, to say that we're gonna have to dance a jig is probably an understatement. But we are working on the music of that dance. And as part of that, of part of the discussion, potentially, we will need some buy-in from our good business folks at Cumberland Farms. So I, the chief reached out to the manager there, and the manager got him some information, and he got it to me, and I reached out to the top dog or one of the top dogs at Cumberland Farms Corporate in their real estate division. And I've got, I had a very nice conversation with them yesterday. And they are very gracious about, and went as far as offering to close the store if we needed their entire parking lot. And I said that I thought that wouldn't be the case, that they would need to close their store. As the board doesn't know yet, but when we, as we get ready to sign the contract, we're gonna bring in the AM Graton Bridge folks to give you an overview, to talk to the board. We'll talk about money, and we'll talk about how the, how the proposed plan is going to go. We have a couple of hiccups, and one of those hiccups is, is how do we take care of Route 3 traffic? To say the least, so I do appreciate that the chief was there to help steer this along, because I think it's gonna take a lot of input. So one of the thoughts that is, is, is out there is not, nothing is etched in stone except for the cost of the bridge, the cost of the replacement, the time it's gonna take to take it out, and the time it's gonna take to put it back. And, and the time that we, the timeline that we hope to begin this. That really is the only thing etched in stone at this point. However, and I'm gonna take credit for this, because it was the chief's idea, I think, was as you look, stand on the, the, the bridge and look at Cumberland Farms parking lot, they have an east entrance and a west entrance. In between those two entrances is curbed and is a, a small island that is designed to separate the traffic, keep them in there and divert the traffic to the entrances and exits. The thought was, if we, during construction, we've got to set up an 80-ton is that right, Tim, 80-ton crane? Tim's amazed at this.
Yeah, well, the crane has a 200-foot boom, and it has 275,000 pounds of counterweight.
Right. Do it, so that's gonna take some space to set up.
So, is, so essentially, if we could use their parking lot, right?
Yeah, that's the trick, Eric, so, so my thought, and the chief's thought when we were talking, is, is temporarily laning it. In other words, putting cones and directing people into the cones and directing people out of the cones. So that way, we can make it safe for pedestrian traffic with westbound traffic and/or, hopefully not, hopefully, chief, that we have to go to one lane and stagger traffic. If we can run two continuous lanes, that would be great. We expect our crane to be there for as, as, hopefully, the longest period would be eight hours. It's gonna take some setup time and that stuff, obviously, and breakdown time. But about eight hours, and we'll have to load that bridge in two sections on two separate tractor trailers. So we would shut down the road for removal of the bridge for one day, hopefully. That would be a day that I would look to the chief to pick on the least traffic. Excuse me, whether it's, you know, on Wednesday morning at 6:00 a.m. or whatever. And we would work with the bridge folks and the crane folks. The DOT would like us to do it at night.
I was just gonna say.
Yes, and I think I've told the board that before. Our bridge folks are really thinking that's gonna be difficult, and obviously, that makes it more dangerous. So we're hoping, what I'm trying to do is, is before we go to the state and begin kissing the feet and begging, is, is say, listen, you know, we've got an alternative plan here, and we will minimize the impact of Route 3 traffic as, as best we can. So Cumberland's was, this man, his name is Russ, he was very gracious. And I, I did say, in between the time of removing the bridge and replacing the bridge is gonna be about a year, it's about a year to fix it. I say about a year, because Tim and I spoke to the engineer and said, if you could do it sooner, we'd be happier. But at, at any juncture, if we remove their island and remove that curbing, that would be at our expense, obviously. And, and then we would have to replace it, so our thought process is this, after having a discussion with the Cumberland Farms man yesterday, is to Jersey barrier it for a year, Cumberland's will be okay with this. To Jersey bury it currently where that island exists, so that you don't have traffic just darting out into the road. And you have a pedestrian walkway, pedestrian safety there as well. Cumberland's is even in agreement with that if we do it. Uh, Cumberland's is even in agreement with that if we do it. Um, and then upon replacement of the bridge, we would then, um, reconstruct, uh, that island as I said to them, to their liking, short of building, you know, uh, gold curbing or any of that. But if, you know, if they wanted, like currently, I believe it's, it's either stone or it, it's all last. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. Yep. Right. And if they wanted us to put loam in there and a couple of low growing shrubs, we would do that as they've been gracious to us. So I, my intent in talking to you tonight is just to keep you up to date, um, on this and, um, let you know that that, I mean, things are coming together, um, pretty well and, um, we will be, when we have contract signatures, we will plan for a meeting that, uh, they, those folks are here with you. Um, and, um, you can ask questions and, and that stuff. So.
Great.
So, uh, having said that, um, I am done.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate you and Tim both on the work that you're doing on that bridge.
And, and the chief's help and input was instrumental, so.
Unbelievable. Um, not sure whether or not our candidate is gonna show up or not.
I don't know what happened. Maybe he gets stuck in that traffic too and.
Get it.
So, uh, we can do it another time if not.
Just, yeah, we'll.
I, I can, I have, uh, if the board would like to look at it, I do have his, uh, application. Uh, and it basically, you know, just talks about what he's interested in and what he has for a bit, a little bit of a background. He has a, a BS in corporate finance and economics, uh, and an AS in, uh, business administration. So he's interested in the planning board. He lives here in town. I don't know how long he's lived here, but John, you may know him. He lives up by you on Grant Street, 4 Grant Street.
I know the place, yeah.
Yeah. Isn't that the old parents', parents' place?
I don't know who he is and that's why we asked him to come in.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we can, I've continued him three times because of the weather, so it's gotta be a miscommunication.
No problem.
We'll get him here.
Yep. Um, I, I took the liberty of printing out an extra planning board, handing handbook, just in case we did approve. So it's right here.
All right. I'll put it with his application. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. You have more on your, are you all done on your report?
Nope. I'm, I'm all done. I, uh, in your, uh, binders, you do have my, um, weekly report. You also have one from the chief. Uh, the chief's is in there. Um, I was supposed to reach out to Shane today and get his report. Uh, I neglected to do that. It was a little crazy today, so.
Yeah.
Um, but we will get their monthly report.
Before, before I ask Tim if he needs to speak to us, uh, I have two things. Amy would love us to look through our, thank you, I see, uh, John doing it. I have a stack here. I'm gonna leave it here and just say trash and she'll pick it up tomorrow and shred it. So look through your, your binders and.
Couple of weeks I'm gonna call.
Thank you. Well, you, you're gonna just, here you go.
The whole pile is going in there, right?
Use it again.
Joe, you'll be missed, uh, definitely. Okay. It's, um, I have one other question. Uh, IMC, where is that? You know, Bellknap County? Is that all on board? Everything's fine? We remember we were doing something with IMC and. Well, where is it? What?
No recording issues.
So there's issues with it? Okay. Enough said. Won't go any further with that one. Tim, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, just that, uh, I did provide a report, uh, in your binders and also financial report. And really the, there's a few things on my report, but the most important is, uh, uh, that looking at our 2025, 2025 year-to-date budget, uh, we're running about, um, 79,000, uh, over budget right now. And that's primarily because of, uh, front-end loaded things like software licenses, annual insurance premium and a bond payment that we have to make in January. Uh, but, but, uh, you'll see that I, uh, put in there what our, what our daily burn rate is for budget. And I can tell you that looking at how we're proceeding right now, we are very tight on the budget. And I'm concerned in particular about, um, one of the lines in the administrative administration budget that I think we may have to add to at town meeting, which is the, um, uh, the line for legal services. So I think it's most likely we're gonna have to increase that by either 15 or $20,000, uh, at town meeting. So other than that, um, you'll, you can see the rest of my report, but, uh, that's really the most important thing I wanted to mention, just we have to keep that in mind as we progress. And of course, uh, we'll probably have a lot better idea of what we need to do at town meeting, uh, when we get there. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to add to.
Thank you, Tim. Go ahead.
I, I wanted to add to Tim's comments, uh, because we had a discussion today, uh, as we'll learn a little bit later. Um, my, my concern is that the legal line and, um, and I think we're gonna have to look at that very closely and add money to it.
Right.
Thank you.
I, I think it's all, all of our concern. Okay. Um, we took off the selectmen's reports because we were so boggled down with everything. And now we've had people with no shows and, uh, a couple of things changed on the agenda tonight. So if people have selectmen need, wanna talk or have something come up, bring it on. John, Eric?
I'm just, you know, with, with all this snow, I want to thank the Public Works Department.
Oh.
You know, if they're back to back, non-stop and then clearing out downtown only to have it all come back in again.
I know.
Right.
And, you know, just all the slop. And I can tell you the sidewalks, they are out there.
Right.
Real fast doing them. I, I see that go up and then he doesn't just leave it to first pass. He'll go back and do another one, clean it up. It's phenomenal. We haven't had anything like this for a while and their response has been.
The comments from the business owners are, are very, very positive. They're very, I mean, we've not had it, like John said, we've not had it like this before, oh, since a long time. And boom, 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 day after day, they've done a tremendous job, tremendous job.
I, I, just so the board knows, I shared that comment with Shane in my office this morning. Um, I have, uh, on a couple of occasions said to him, listen, you know, I know you guys are working, you know, around the clock. When you can come, or if, if you need to stagger it and have a guy get a couple, or a person get a couple extra hours sleep or whatever, don't worry about it. Do it. Um, you know, they, they are, and, um, um, I, I did tell them that I, I greatly appreciate, uh, and, and I will share with them the board's comments. I'm sure they'll appreciate it because, uh, they're all very tired and, um, you know, when I drove through town, uh, Tuesday morning and saw the, the cleanup, I was like impressed. Uh, but they've, they've done a great job and, and I, I personally on Facebook put a little comment on there and, and, uh, and got a lot of nice comments back, so, so.
I, just some of the, uh, business owners, when they plow their parking lots, have been putting snow right at the corners. It's their, they shouldn't be doing that. They're not supposed to. And, um, you know, I realize they drive pickup trucks, but some of our cars are shorter than other people's cars.
Especially yours, John.
So you, you gotta pull out all the way into the lane on like 2311, just to see.
Yeah.
They're six, seven feet high.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know if we could maybe give them a head job that they think I do that.
Yeah, Shane and I talked, in fact, the chief, uh, uh, his staff went over and specifically in the municipal lot over here, there had been, um, some, some abuses and the chief and his staff, uh, I understand wrote a couple of tickets and that stuff, so, so, but yes, good point.
Tough, yeah. Tough season, but.
Yeah.
It is winter.
Yeah, it is. But you know, it, it's amazing because, uh, downtown, we have a lot of new business owners. And I think they got used to after a storm, our highway, uh, cleaned up. But what you didn't see this year was the business owners coming out and doing pathways to their businesses. And I, I asked that question one time saying, where they thought the highway did that. And I said, no, 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 no. That's your responsibility to do that. And, uh, oh, I, I, they didn't realize it because, you know, to the street, you know, when you have that little buildup.
Yep.
It, when the customers get out, you can't get over that little buildup. It's hard to get up. If you go into the hairdressers or wherever you're going, this, and there's a lot of new business owners downtown that didn't realize that. So.
Yeah.
They passed the word real quick.
Yeah.
So now you see little paths.
Right.
Yep. That's good. They all get together.
Yep.
Work it out. Um, okay. Is there anything else?
We, we start thinking about, um, it's never too soon to start thinking about trash contracts. Always keep that in your mind because we know that it's a changeover and bio. I forget when our contract expires, but we're going to be, it's gonna be a big one. What are we gonna do? Keep thinking about how we're gonna deal with trash, um, in the next couple of years. It's probably likely to double in cost.
We're gonna have a separate committee and invite Joe back and make sure that he works on that.
What do you think, Joe?
Garbage.
But yeah.
When the time comes, I would be glad to, uh,
There you go.
Use my expertise such as.
That's right.
All right, so.
Let the record show.
Yeah.
Let the record show.
February approximately. You know when it is up the contract?
It's.
I think we're in the third year.
Yeah, we've got five, right?
Two more years.
We're in the third year of a five-year.
Yeah.
Of a monopoly.
Never too soon to start thinking.
End of '27.
Twenty, twenty-seven, yep. Well, I'll be long gone by then. Oh.
Yeah, I, yeah. It's gonna come quick.
Yep, it is.
That's all I got.
The, there's something else that's gonna, we're all set. Make sure we have the box, the selectmen's box up at the voting. I'm gonna say that because in the absence of, uh, Selectman Dawson, there's a selectmen box with all of our little things that we need.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yep.
If I could, I just wanted to let people know that on the town website, on the front page is information about the town meeting as well as the posted warrant and budget in state format. And then also the, our budget in the regular town format that is by department. And in addition, there's also information on Academy Street Engineering on the, the engineering report and also, uh, information sheet on the bond information. So that's all there along with, uh, other announcements that we had. So just want to let you know.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim.
It's great. Okay. Well, um, anyone else have anything? I know you all, stack them up here when you're finished and, and then I'll put this little sign that says trash on it. And then we'll all know that that's what that is. Um, and she will be delighted.
Yes, she will.
Absolutely delighted. Um, okay. So there was a non-public tonight. Um, the person that asked for the non-public would really like Catherine to be here. So we're gonna wait for that to be in a couple of weeks. So, um, if there's no other business to come before, uh, John?
I'm setting up who's, we're gonna wait for Catherine to do that or do you want tentatively go over it?
Do you have the warrant? Do you have a printed warrant? We could do that. We could do that. Yep. We could tend to do, because we kind of know which one she's, she will take anyway.
Then that part's done.
Good night, Greg. Nice to see you.
Bye, Greg. Take care.
Oh, Greg, you know when Maple Weekend's coming up for, uh, the neighbors up the road?
Probably the third weekend in March.
Third weekend, okay. I didn't know if they were looking at anything in it. Okay. I didn't know if they were planning anything this year.
Last year was the day of the.
Right. Still is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
That, Madam Chair, before you close, can you take a recess so I can ask you a question regarding our meeting last night?
Oh, so that would be?
Um, I, I, I don't know that I even have to recess or, um, I was told.
You have information for us, right?
I, 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 I do have information.
It's public.
And, and, um, but I also had somebody tell me something different than I wrote down last night, and I want to clarify that.
And do we have to make a decision?
Um, No.
Yeah, you don't have to yet because the person that I spoke to is checking to make sure
Okay.
there's no conflicts. And then gonna get back to me.
Yeah, it's the same. Yep. So Maple Weekend is the same day as town meeting.
Oh.
Maple Weekend is the same day as town meeting.
Article one is putting article two as one of the amendments that we decided on Tuesday. Um, meeting starting morning starts on article three.
Oh, why did we put the, the, uh, operating budget in article four and? Oh, I see. Because of the first one's a bond issue. All right. I got it. Who would like to tackle, um, Academy Street in, in the retaining wall?
Catherine.
I'll take Academy Street.
All right. You wanna do that? Okay.
That was easy.
Joe. Okay. Uh, the operating budget, it's not us. It's the budget street. All right. Roads, bridges, sidewalks, capital reserve. I mean, if you don't know about this, Eric, and you'd like to speak about it, you can get the information. It's pretty easy with, it's what we put away each, uh, year. And then you just get up and say, say, this is what we put away each year. These are the roads.
Article five.
Yep.
Also, Madam Chair, uh, we will have a, um, a, um, information packet for the Board of Selectmen. So each article will be printed in it and then also the information that, uh, might be asked, questions or, or balances, that sort of thing.
All right.
Right, so it's.
I'll do that one.
And, and, yeah, they'll help you out.
Industrial cheat sheets.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so Eric will do article five. Um, highway, um, capital reserve? Anyone?
I'll take that one.
Okay, I'll, okay. Go ahead, Eric. Getting your feet wet there.
I as well.
Revaluation I can do. Uh, appropriate 20,000 in a town building infrastructure. Anybody want to take article eight? John, I don't see your name on any of them.
I, I'm, I'm looking at, I'd like nine and 10.
All right, I'll do eight.
You know, Catherine can take, grab any of these too, but those are ones I've been doing. You know, Catherine can take, grab any of these too, but those are ones I've been doing like.
Okay.
They've always passed, so.
So Eric, you don't have to take them all. Just remember that. Okay, Eric?
All right, that's it.
That's all I'm taking.
The Island. Who would like to talk about the Island?
That's nine.
Oh, you wanna do nine?
Yeah.
Oh, John.
I already wrote his name down.
I, nine and ten are like the ones I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mill foil, of course, yep. All right, recycling revolving fund for highway equipment purchases.
That's gotta be a joke.
That's gotta be a joke.
It says.
Sure, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Do we have any other takers?
Modify elderly exemption.
Sounds like a pet.
Yep.
It does.
I don't know a thing about it, but I'll talk about it.
No.
Okay, well, hold on a minute.
Well, how about Catherine?
We don't have Catherine down here for anything.
Oh, boy, she got away.
What?
Three, right?
She'll probably be real glad.
I think by default, she's gonna get three.
No, no.
No.
No, we don't want her to speak on that.
On three?
Yeah. Nope.
All right, so we can.
We're do, no, we're okay. She's, she's fine. She.
And anyone that she wants to jump in on, have at.
Yep.
And she will.
Yep. She can. Are we okay with this, everybody?
Madam Chair, just to.
We can send to.
Go back over the list.
One more time. A, a thought. Do you want me and Tim to be prepared to talk about the Island Bridge?
Absolutely.
Okay.
In, in.
Boom, yeah.
On all of these, you and Tim need to be the backup, plan B.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because when they start firing off questions about some of these specifics.
Yeah.
Tim is our go-to guy, always has been, always will be.
Yeah.
Hopefully. Till, till I get out anyway.
Oh, no, he's standing.
He can't retire till I retire.
I used my old handcuffs.
We always.
I've chained him to the radiator.
This is the way it looks. And so that's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've been the recipient.
You know, he has the technology just to put a little earpiece in your ear, right? And it'll make you, it'll make all of us look a lot smarter.
Tim?
She would be, yeah. He can stand behind.
I would really like that. And then he could make me really smart. I could, I could handle that.
Just say this.
AI, AI holograms.
So everybody okay with, with this warrant and who's going to speak on it just to get it onto the floor?
Yep.
Okay. And then, so now we can send this to Helen. And just let him know that this is.
Who's speaking on?
Who's speaking on, on this? Article four, of course, is budget.
Yep.
Budget Committee.
Correct.
All right.
So I never saw, what vacancies do we have on elected officials? Do we have any? I, I just saw it the Thursday before. You know, selectmen, the budget committee.
We, I don't think we have any.
They're all, all, somebody signed up for all things.
I'm pretty sure that we don't have any openings for elected officials, do we?
Budget, did we fill all the budget committee?
I think there was still a budget.
Yeah, one budget. The guy that spoke to you and I, Tim, Bill.
All the other ones.
He, he didn't, he didn't sign up. I don't think he did, so.
Do we have the copy of the ballots available yet?
Actually.
On the website?
They're counting them.
Tomorrow, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't get, we don't even get a copy of it until they count them first.
We'll have a sample.
They open the box.
She hasn't given me the sample ballot yet.
Until she opens the box.
Put it up.
Yep.
Okay, that works.
That's what I meant to say, yep.
Yeah. I miss the election.
There. Okay.
I'm hoping we don't have to deal with, we haven't had the meeting before town meeting, so get a better eye on the weather.
Oh, it's no snow.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some pretty crazy ones.
Ten, eleven inches.
Yep.
At least.
We can have.
Only if.
We can have the chief come pick us up in the Tahoe.
We have had big snowstorms.
Only when Eric is running, do we have a snowstorm on it.
Eric out there with his sign.
Well, the patrols can come because of.
Would stand out there in this. Every time Eric runs, we get major snowstorms at election day.
Okay, are we just shooting the breeze here or?
Maybe.
We're just looking, wonder if we need to start thinking about what happens with the weather, but we've got another week to talk about.
Yeah, yeah. And we have DOT if the board wants to. A quick reminder, DOT is the sixth. Lake Ridge and Planning, I've asked them to come as well. So they can talk about any input that they have on any of the DOT projects and that stuff, so.
Real quick, how soon of an answer will you guys all have when making the decision for DOT, if this approves for the Island Bridge? Because you're, obviously you're gonna, they're gonna need to, I'm sure they'll be there.
Yeah, yeah.
As well, so.
Yep. So I, I would anticipate that we're probably, at the rate we're going, we probably should be sitting down with them next month and putting a plan
Yeah.
together. I didn't want to preempt our.
Yeah. Especially when we're meeting with them.
Right.
The sixth, I don't think that's the time to talk.
But that, that, that may be, I, I've, I've already noticed them that we're going to need to discuss that. It'll probably be in a teams approach. But if we have to, we'll take a, a board meeting if the board sees fit to, to have the discussion. I, I think that's something that probably Tim and I could handle, but if, you know, we want to just make sure that our last remaining questioned, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but is the engineer was gonna check with the crane operator about a night? If we have to do it, as soon as I said it, he cringed, you know, he's like.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Not advisable.
No.
It's not.
Right.
Not a lot of lighting anyway, so.
So we're gonna have to make sure we have our, you know, our ducks and a plan in place that, that is gonna be acceptable to them.
Well, I mean, you know, you have, especially if you have.
Police.
If you have a TT unit that's going to be, this is gonna be sitting on.
Right.
So they're gonna have to back into place, which means
we need police.
Radius in that area.
Yep.
To back them. Yeah.
Double hundred feet heading towards the old PD.
Yeah.
Because the counterweights are on semi-trucks.
Yeah.
So when the crane gets set up, then they have to then figure out, you know, how far your boom goes out, because obviously.
Yep.
And then they gotta figure out the counter, those, they'll park up at Lowe's, right?
Lowe's.
And then they'll come down, but they gotta be in that package.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
They'll have the counterweight. And the crane will then, then is able to come over and load its own counterweight. And then the next one will come up. So it needs to be a pretty big package.
Right.
Yeah.
A package, right, so it's obviously side package construction wise.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
The setup is about four hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're gonna, we're gonna need, we're gonna need, obviously, the police there for, for all of it and then some. So, so it's gonna cost us on that side, but it's well worth it. It'll be well worth it, so.
I have one more thing that I forgot to do on my, my own report is that a while back, we discussed moving a certain person downstairs into Heather's office, person that does the selectmen's minutes and so on and so forth. I would like to see that happen sooner rather than later. We all agreed that that would, would happen. This person is in favor of that happening.
Right.
But.
Right.
It hasn't happened.
It, it hasn't happened and I, I, I think we got off on a couple of different avenues with space needs. But that is one that we can do without making any, you know, costing us anything. And all I need from the board is agreement that, you know, Heather would be the person that would be either moving up to the stage temporarily. I think, Tim, correct me, you're, you're the history guy here on this, but, but she really, the concern was needing a locked file cabinet that we've now got if we need it. And, and obviously the chief has been very gracious again about when Heather meets with people that there might be some safety concerns or whatever, he's allowed her to work there. And Heather, since I've been here six months, you know, she's very busy. She does most of her work remotely. And this would be a big advantage for everybody in that back office if we could take and for Sue, who has to get concentrate and get your, your, your notes or minutes very accurate. It's really important. So if the board could just give me the assurance that we all support that, and I'll make that, I'll make that happen.
Work with Heather on that.
Work with Heather.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm, I'm in favor.
I thought we already decided.
I, I thought.
We really did, Joe, but.
Yeah.
Or then let's just do it.
Okay.
Did we resolve handicap access, access for, because of many people that are on some type of public assistance.
Yeah.
Need some type of handicap access or availability for space.
Yeah. She could use, and in fact, I shared this today, she could use my office if she needs to, which is handicap accessible. I have a big, our conference table in there.
The break room, I think if necessary.
She could use the break room or she could use our little room, conference room downstairs.
I think that's something that.
Yeah, or she could meet at the PD. So the chief's already told her, so whatever.
All works out.
Yep.
Okay, good. Great.
I will, I will work with Heather on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Much appreciated. All right. Joe, do we have any business to come before us?
I just have this one thing. It's recurring and I feel like it's my responsibility at this point to say, motion to adjourn.
Time being six fifty-one. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.